How did we change that for the sound?
You know how it echoes sometimes? Like here.
There's kids coming through the neighborhood. It was actually jumping on driveways with people in their yard. Down in the ditch.
Or yeah, do that. Okay.
The three, there was a three-way. Up on the hill. And actually, I stopped the neighbor.
I don't know what, what it is, but I figured out.
He was like going like this.
I'm typing in. Okay. Or explicitly give you this. Oh, yeah, yeah.
People in the yard.
I mean, I doubt anybody. Well, unless anybody talks, but.
Good evening.
Hello. Hello, how are you? What's your name? What's your name? Oh, you're silly.
He was over 55.
Want to help me get some water?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Next week. Is Laura's coming later?
No.
Well, she's on vacation or something.
She might be.
Do I remember that?
Or for a bridge, I mean.
That's why I called.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Hanging in there.
The weather was.
The rain or the cool or both? I was happy to see the sun.
We're back home.
As I walked in here. Get out of here, get some supper and go for a nice long walk. Beautiful.
About 15 minutes to sit on the stool and eat it.
Usually about my favorite part of the day.
I mean, I'm gonna make dinner. I'm gonna try to make dinner in between meetings.
Just the neighborhood of my house, so there's some nice spots.
Popcorn. Well, my family is old enough to take care of themselves. I don't worry about it.
The news reporter told me that it's not true. That Carl Prowl was developing 70 lots and a lake across from CJ Auto. But I called him and asked about it and he said, no. It's not true. He said he's 100% against it. Somebody from Tower Investments, which doesn't sound very promising after what Tower did to Pine Island.
See the agenda?
Sorry, I have a second.
There's a call to order. So you know option for public comment, unfortunately for you.
Are all Rochester's lakes in Amsterdative or?
Yeah, they're reservoirs.
There's your daddy. You ready to go?
Even the one out on Second Street Southwest.
You want to go and play with your dad?
Ready to target?
Yes.
Thursday, July 8th, this is a special city council meeting. And so we'll do a real call real quick here.
Jim Richards.
Ryan Nijon.
Lizzie Fuqion.
All right, so we've got some sewer issues, easement issues on our agenda. So let's, Joe, if you want to give some overview of this first item of the.
Yeah, so there is a memo in your packet. It really deals with two parcels that are east of First Street Northeast and north of East Center Street. So that would be these two parcels here. Okay, and so visiting with those property owners, they have some concerns about the property or the project. And there's, this is a steep, heavily wooded area. And what we had planned to do is directional drill along the property line up the hill. And then this is a one and a half inch diameter pipe that connects to grinder stations. And then, you know, we essentially pump it down the hill. But because of the fact that they're about a little over 500 feet away from this gravity sewer here, that's the most efficient way to serve them. And so one of the things we didn't realize when we were laying this out that the property owners didn't know about is as you kind of get up into the trees, there are some fairly significant rock up crappings. And so that makes directional drilling it expensive and difficult. And so that probably means an open trench scenario in lieu of what we had anticipated as a directional drill scenario. And because of that, property owners are concerned about that scenario because it would impact the landscape and it is so steep there. And so as a function of the property owner's concern, the fact that there is rock there and viable construction methods likely an open trench scenario where trees would have to come down. We think that it would maybe be best for the council to consider delaying service for these areas until Phase 1B. Phase 1B goes up to, you can't see it, but the JASIC division up here, subdivision up here, you know, so potentially sewer will extend up East Center Street. And then we can service them through this corridor along their driveway and not have to take trees and things like that. So Phase 1B is, you know, potentially 2030. You know, we would lose two users, but we would also decrease construction costs fairly significant amount. The properties are large lot properties. There are some of the, you know, they're relatively new. I think that they have some options if their septic fails. Property owners aren't necessarily in favor of it. To me, it makes sense to consider pushing that off. And really, the until Phase 1B.
So they're not in favor of waiting?
They are in favor of waiting.
Oh, okay.
They've been in a couple of times to visit. Nice people and kind of share their perspective. And, you know, I guess as I look at it and we went out and reevaluated it, they're probably right. So I can't make this change without council consent. So that's why I'm here. And then the second thing I need to do is write a letter to the MPCA simply explaining what we're proposing to do. Unless you want to leave it a status quo and then we'll leave it a status quo. I've got to explain that we proposed to pull those back to Phase 1B and remove those from the approved construction plans. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're looking at. Questions?
I guess my only question is, is there other, potentially other places that this could happen? Have you?
You know, I suppose it depends on your perspective. But these are, if you look at this, they're, they're pretty isolated. It's just these two parcels and they got included because.
Well, kind of squares up there.
There's other options.
May not be for others.
Right. You know, for example, over here, there's only one place for the sewer to go. The river is up here and, you know. So if they're gonna get served and we've made the decision that everybody gets served, you know. Whereas here, you know, this does make some sense. There is an option. There's a trade-off.
I make a motion that we move the service, sewer service for 395 and 405 Center Street East from Phase 1A to Phase 1B.
A second.
Second, Jim. Any more discussion or comments? I think it's good that they agree. And every time their sewer systems are relatively new or in good shape that they can wait five, six, seven, eight, nine years, whatever.
So everyone else on First? What's the date or what are the?
Center Street is.
Center Street.
This is here.
Yeah, yeah. East Center Street, not West Center Street.
That's where, that's why I'm confused. Got it. Now I'm getting it.
So big picture, here's the JASIC subdivision. Can hear these two parcels across the street. Sort of.
I mentioned that earlier.
Yeah. It helps that you said Mercy and, okay. Perfect.
Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose say no. That's approved. All right, that time is a resolution.
And this is just a standard resolution to approve the plans and specifications that we prepared and the PCA is approved and authorized us to go to bid. And so it's really a requirement of the 429 assessment process. It's another box to check. I did want to kind of call to your attention the fact that this project is, has got, or we're proposing kind of an extended bid window. The statute requires a minimum of three months or three weeks of advertising. We're really gonna advertise this for six weeks. And the reason for that is the size and complexity of the project. And also that we're pre-qualifying some contractors during the first two weeks of the bidding process for SCADA. SCADA is for SCADA improvements. For the communications, the controls and communications software that kind of runs everything. Okay, and so different people can do this and they've, we're, as part of the solicitation, they need to send us their qualifications and then we'll pick who is qualified to bid it. So not, not that that's on standard, it's, it's pretty common in fact. But we give people opportunities to bid and hopefully encourage competitive bidding. So we are looking to advertise, in fact, the ad for bid for each of the three contracts would appear in the local paper, the news record, on Wednesday. We'd also advertise in Wednesday, next Wednesday. So the deadline to do that is tomorrow by noon. So we've got all the ads ready and in fact, they've been submitted and they're ready to go, assuming we want to do this. We'd also advertise in Quest CBN and probably also put it in Minneapolis, Minneapolis Finance and Commerce one time. And then apart from that, the bid openings would be on August 25th. We'd open contract one and three. August 26th, we'd open contract two. And the reason we do them differently is because contracts two and three are very similar and the same kind of contractor will be attracted to both. And so people will make adjustments in their bids as to whether they get the first, a contract on the first day. So they will be big enough that they'll really want the second one or small enough that where they can't bid the second one, but at least they'll know. So there's, there's some strategy built into that scenario. And also contracts one and, one and two have interrelation in terms of some of the controls that the lift station will use. They have to match the, the controls that we have the wastewater treatment plant. So, so big picture, that's kind of what is going on in terms of the bid date and what's contained within that resolution.
So one and three is the 25th and number two is the 26th. Yes, one is the wastewater treatment plant, two and three are the infrastructure. So is three or two have, is one, does two or three have all the lift stations or are they?
Two has the lift stations.
Two has lift.
Yeah, and three has the grinder pumps.
Let me see what you're saying about all the lift stations talking. What'd you say the first one has, Joe?
The 25th. We'll open at 10 and 2.
10 AM on the one.
Yeah.
Two o'clock on number three.
Yeah, I think that's the way I got it.
The 25th.
Yes. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
So in the resolutions, they talk about the 25th. Wait a second, you don't mention the contracts. Is that necessary to be in the resolution?
I don't think it is. I think you're telling me to bid the projects and it's gonna be, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the advertisements are two pages. There's a lot of information.
So what happens between the 25th, 26th and the September council meeting?
We evaluate the bids.
Evaluate the bids takes that long.
Yeah. And then there's, you know, the cash flow. Calculate, there's a lot of calculations that have to be done with PFA specifically. By the way, the the project got certified. The PSEC funding got certified. We qualified for 15, over $15 million in PSEC. The max of PSEC is seven. That's what we assumed we'd get. But it just shows you how above and beyond if they, if they would pick that max up, it would mean huge money for us, but they don't, is what it is, but.
Anybody like to make the motion for the resolution?
Make a motion that we pass resolution 2021-17. For a second.
Second.
Any other comments or questions for, for Joe? So seeing that this is a voice vote, all those. Did you get any comments before, excuse me, from Mike or anything? I think you just said go ahead and do it. Your experience in writing the resolution.
Yeah, no, I didn't. He didn't comment on it. I did copy him on it though.
All those in favor of the resolution 2021-17 by voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Pose? That's approved. That's a big deal.
Yeah, it is.
All right. Low water, low pressures, sewer easements agreements. About two or three different, there's three different things we're talking about here, but just, you know, summarize.
And they all kind of, right, they all kind of revolve around the low pressure easements and correspondence that we want to have with the residents. And so we'd like to draft a letter and in fact, I have drafted a letter. Given you a copy. It's similar to the last letters. But what's different about this is it includes a deadline for residents to respond. And so I think that's item three. That would be the August 13th date. So we're, you know, right, right to this point, we've sent residents lots of correspondence, but we've never said you have to respond by this date. Well, it doesn't, doesn't entice people to respond. Today, we've got, and we're a little over 30, 30 a third respondents sent back their completed agreements, which we'd hoped would be higher. Linda's been making calls. The vast majority of people are supportive, though, you know, they're busy or they're working on things or they've got a, you know, few, few questions they want answered or whatever. But, you know, it's in process. But I think another letter would spur that response and also help this move along. And you'll also notice within the letter that we are proposing another round of public open houses. They would be on July 21st from four to seven PM. And then the following day, the day, July 22nd from nine to noon and then from four to seven again. That's the same scenario that we used last time. I think it works well for people to get here before or after work. Hopefully they can fit it in one day if they have questions. And again, the intent is that we reach people and we address questions and we, you know, facilitate execution of those access easements and maintenance agreement. So really, that, that's it. I probably should highlight a few of the items within the letter. Pretty much everything within the letter has been said either in the FAQs or past letters with the exception of imposing the deadline. There's nothing magical about August 13th either. If you, you want it to be before or after that, we can do that. But I, again, my intent with that is just let's put, let's draw a line in the sand and hopefully motivate people to move forward and execute the documents. One of the things that I think the letter does kind of heavy-handedly is the last paragraph on the first page. It really kind of says there's a deadline. If you don't respond, here are the ramifications. And the ramifications are the same ramifications that we've kind of talked about in the past. They were in the last FAQ, item number five. It's almost verbatim from that, with the exception of I have dated some of the language associated with the city's code, which we adopted since then. I think at this point, you know, all of this information is appropriate. But if anybody's uncomfortable or has proposed enhancements, let me know.
Doesn't change any of the dates we've already communicated, has it? Okay.
And it, it also includes, the second page includes an invitation to the open house for July 22 and 21 and 22. So, you know, I kind of wanted the councils buy in on, yep, we need to send out a letter. Yeah, that letter should probably include a deadline. And the dates proposed in the letter for the public open house make sense.
And is it, so what is it clear? I don't know if it's clear to me in the letter, what happens if you don't comply by the deadline?
Well, I thought about putting in some language in the letter that says, you know, if you don't comply, we'll assume that you're declining the easement. Obviously, we want everybody to participate. And in my mind, it makes no sense not to participate. I mean, the pros and the cons are so imbalanced that it doesn't make sense. So I can add something like that, but, you know, the truth, truth be told is if you come back on July 20th and tell me, Joe, we should extend that deadline two weeks, then we extend the deadline two weeks.
Okay, that's fine. I wonder.
There's nothing magical about the deadline.
Right.
Aside from it's a reasonable amount of time from here to there to get this done. We just can't kick it down the road, kick the can down the road for forever because some people do that.
So there isn't a, there isn't a deadline for funding purposes truly? Or is there?
I kind of like the 13th, but because if you go to the next week, it's gold rush. So then we're moving it out to the 27th.
Then kids go back to school and then, and then after that, kids are going back to school and it's all sorts of priorities.
Well, the reality is the bid date for the project is August 25th. And so a week and a half later. And it would really be nice to know what we have. You know, if there are certain parcels that are out, then, then, because we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars here, you know, in construction costs. So if they're out and they're truly out, then, then we don't have to really count them as part of the project costs. Frankly, I don't know what to expect in this bidding environment. We are seeing things all over.
No, I think, I think that's, you make a good point. And I think that might be something we, we want to add to the letter is that the bid openings are on the 25th and 26th. And you're, and people failing to meet the April 13th date are subject to be out. It's kind of forceful, but at the same time, there's a reason for wanting the 13th date or whatever date we decide on.
I can work that date in. I mean, people probably should know. The product's moving forward.
Right.
The bid date's this. We need to know if you're in or out. You know, it, it all kind of makes sense without really spelling it out in the letter.
I think, to me, I would say spell it out so they can't say, well, you didn't say.
If we're gonna tell them you can't, if you're gonna miss it, this is what's gonna cost you. So here's the reasons why it's important that you make your decision because we're doing the bill openings and we're reporting it September 21st. We're starting one October and either you're in or out.
And it affects project cost in the end and your name and everybody else's contribution to it.
I would, you know, people like, they don't like deadlines, but they, they respond to deadlines. And to help, you know, I don't have any problem with the open houses on the 21st, 22nd. I think that's good. I think at some time, maybe after that open house on the 21st, 22nd, we decide if, if we should do one on the 12th and 13th just to say this is the drop dead date. And you can come in last minute and still sign on the 13th. Requires a little more time on you and Linda's, but at the same time, I don't know if you want to announce that now or not. Wait till the 23rd and say.
Let's wait because then, then, then everybody's gonna kick that. Then they won't bother coming to the first.
They're gonna do it anyway.
You know, and let's just see where we're at there. Maybe we can do individual meetings at that point, you know, if, if there's a half a dozen people left, we'll knock on doors.
And there is incentive for them, you know, other than cost, right? Because wasn't there something, is this the one where we were going to construct? Or was, was there something where we were gonna pay for part of it? Or I remember before there was someone.
Their current septic.
Right, so the.
That's right.
Yeah. So right now, if they don't sign the agreement, we terminate the service at the property line. And then the property owner is responsible to build the rest of it per the ordinance. And so that could be $15,000 out of their pocket. Plus, they have to abandon their septic tank. Plus, they get assessed. And plus, they get essentially fined every month they don't connect.
Well, you know, I think I was saying for grinder stations.
Yeah, so there, there's a huge incentive to just play ball because you lose all of the subsidy.
Right, right.
And I've had a conversation with a homeowner and I spelled those things out and threw up through an email, kind of spelled it out, just like you said it. I wonder if we shouldn't.
Put it in a bullet point.
Yeah, almost like, like, almost like just, you cannot miss it. Like this is what you will be responsible for, like in a, in a really easy to read form. Because I really liked that last sentence and I think that's really important. But that's not truly the total cost when you think about monthly bills and banning the septic as well. Right?
Right? So like, maybe.
So if you take that second to the last sentence in that paragraph, and put that into bullets forms.
Like, kind of like what you just said, Joe, like, you gotta, you know, you have your monthly, you'll be month assessed, you'll be fined, you'll have the you have to construct your own, and you have to abandon your own septic, like, those four things should be like folded almost.
Yeah, maybe it should read like, if you decline to grant those low pressure sewer easement to Ryland's, yeah, to Ryland's point, then bullet point, those next things that you have there, this is what's gonna happen, this is what you gotta pay.
Okay.
Who put a note on top that says response required? Or would that be not
stamp it on the envelope and write it?
I, I don't know. That's not a bad idea. I will, I'm not opposed to that. I could put it right under the, you know, where it says reference, it says, lists the project, and it says notice of August twenty, or August thirteenth deadline, and I could put below that, response required.
Yeah.
Is there, I like things like, put it on the envelope. Seriously, no, because if you see that on the outside of the envelope, most time they're gonna, they're gonna look at it.
Now, this will be certified mail again?
We weren't gonna certify mail it, because it takes a long to everybody's got to the post office to get it, and we're, we're gonna send this out on Tuesday, and then the next Wednesday is the open house, and so if we send it on Tuesday, they should get it by Friday, Saturday, and plan to come to the open house the next, you know, three, four days later, but if we send it certified mail, then then we have to delay everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the cost.
And we, we have this mailing, and we were, I think we got one back last time and fixed that, so I, I think people are getting it. Oh, your mail here is.
I was laughing, sorry.
Nobody says that. It's true.
Yeah, it's only gotten worse recently, so. Unfortunately.
I got mail like a month ago that was supposed to arrive in like the end of December. I don't.
Serious?
Yeah.
See, we don't ever see anything that we don't get a lot of mail anyway, but.
It's all good. I don't know, maybe, I mean, it's not all good. There's obvious issues, but I don't think, I don't know that the city council has a role in the US.
You make a good point, where we're talking about the twenty-first and twenty-second, but there's a lot of ifs in that, if they get the mail.
Well, it's not certified mail though, so.
Just in general. So I'm, I'm just throwing out, should we wait till the twenty, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, that last week in July, just to make sure they get the letter?
The only problem with that is Linda, her daughter's having a baby that week.
Yeah, where's the priorities?
Well, and then that makes that August thirteenth even that much closer. I like the dates as they are. Sometimes when you give somebody too much notice, then they throw it aside and don't plan it too.
I agree, I just, to concern about, down to two or three days of them getting the letter.
Oh, yeah, the, the window.
Well, I think we did a similar timeframe last time, and then I think people got it.
You had a good turnout for that open house. Well, I shouldn't say this, not the first one, the second one you made, I didn't come to that one.
So we'll see.
I guess then my question, you kind of answered it too, was if the people that were not consistently not hearing from, we haven't heard back either by phone, I mean, do you do knock on doors?
We've been calling people.
And.
Or setting up, you know, she corresponds with email, she's been calling people, and she will set up appointments and visit them.
Okay.
And if worse comes to worse, we will knock on doors. I don't know, if we have to.
I just, I just know that we do have some residents who might not answer their phone, either because they don't hear it, or they can't get to it, or, you know, there's.
Think it's just spam?
Right, or, yes, very much so, when people don't recognize the number, they just will not answer the phone.
We can all admit to that on.
Right, I do it. So I just want to make sure that we are taking that next step and not leaving anybody out of the project.
Well, and just personal visits too.
Well, that's what I mean.
After the twenty-first.
Right.
I think so.
Okay.
Then they happen anyway. So we'll look, to read the letter, they if they want another copy of the frequently asked questions, call Linda. Is it, can we include that already in this letter? Make sure they do get it. Well, I know they've sent it, but.
We can. I mean, we can include the frequently asked questions, although have to be updated a little bit again, because it included the old public hearing dates and some other stuff that, you know, like the ordinance references and things what, that's changed.
I just, just trying to eliminate anybody saying, I don't remember seeing the Q and A or.
If they want it, we can send it to them. It also makes the mailing that much more.
Just try and make it easy as possible.
Well, the agreement. The agreements.
The reason I would be in favor of that too, is if it's, if it would eliminate having to visit one, two, three, however many people, because I, I could see people waiting because they have a question, and they they call and they can't get an answer, or whatever the situation might be, then it's going to delay them. You know, is it the bang for the buck? I don't know.
Well, one of my frustrations is you send people stuff, and they will come to the meeting and they will ask questions, and I will look at them and I say, you know, like, glad to ask, answer these, but did you read the frequently asked questions?
No.
I think.
Did you read the letter?
No.
I think that that's very common, and that's why when you see something bulleted out, those important things, you're gonna, your eyes are gonna go right to that, and then that's why I want it to be like, that's what they see, like, if you do not do this, if you get nothing else from this letter.
In return or something.
I almost think my letter's a little, you know, it's a little long. I, I could try to condense a little bit.
Read something this long.
They won't. No, you're absolutely right.
And that's why I like Ryland's idea of bulging, you know? So number one, put it on the envelope that, you know, you have to respond, and number two, if I go in this and I see some things bulleted, I'm gonna pick that out quicker than digging it out of a paragraph.
Yeah, people seem to know when the public open houses were. They're bolded and bold, kind of, well, they stand out, so they, they came to that, they didn't read anything else.
That's what happens, because they expect to be able to just ask questions, because not everybody processes things the same, so some people can't process something they read as much as they can process something they can have a conversation about, so.
Well, I'll look through this and see if there's a way to condense a little bit of the information too. I hate to take stuff out sometimes, but maybe that's better.
I mean, you do say, if you need another copy of the June third letter, or the frequently asked questions, you can contact Linda.
And she's kind of been calling people, and people have the information, they're just.
The other thing, you know, we could, you know, remind them that it's posted on the city website. That's the other thing, you know, all this information is posted on the city website.
That's an FAQ.
Right, but we can remind them in this letter that this is available for you on the website, if you misplaced it, like, if you're a messy paper person like I am.
And it'd probably be a good idea to even post the entire letter on the website stating that this is the mailing that went out.
I don't know if that's a good idea or not, because we're targeting, you know, this will go to probably fifty people.
Yeah, this is everybody.
Doesn't go to the people that have you know, positively responded already, it's just.
That's what makes it tricky about having it out, like, anywhere, like, on the citizen's page or anything, because it doesn't, it almost is confusing, like, because it doesn't, it doesn't affect everybody in the project.
Am I giving them low pressures, you know, and people start asking those type of confusing questions? So that's a, that's a good point. I can, I can maybe at the end there, point them to the website.
And even the title, just the word deadline itself is capitalized at all. Emphasize the deadline date or underline it or something to.
Yep.
I know it's hard to take information out of the letter, but I think the bullets will get the attention. Or if there's some information that is really, it's, it's nice to know information about, we'll have a notary here or something like that, and put that down below, the signatures is more bullet points, so it takes things out of this.
The problem with adding too many bullets is then you add pages.
It really gets bigger.
And I don't want to have it more than one page, front, back, just because it's.
I agree, I agree, that's, one page is optimal, but.
But I think, Joe, that by using bullets, that third, that third paragraph that goes into the second page, I think you can eliminate a lot of the wordiness of that by just using bullets. Because I do think that's another thing we have to take into account, is that not everybody's education or reading level are the same either. So we have to really make it easy to understand and easy to read.
Yeah, I can, I can try to rework some of that.
Because really, this is, like you're saying, it's targeted people, I mean, we could, you could start taking some of the verbiage out. You know, where you mentioned private property, and, yeah, I mean, because you're targeting the people that this pertains to are the ones that are getting the letter specifically. If you don't do it, that's what's gonna happen.
So then, do we have to authorize a, a letter exactly how it is, or can we authorize you to send the letter with some changes that we suggested?
I just think, uh, I don't know that you need to, I, I, all I need is your kind of consent that this is.
Any consent, consensus on the August thirteenth date.
Right, the dates and you know, the kind of the purpose of the letter, I guess, and.
Well, then I make a motion to authorize this letter to be mailed to low pressure sewers, assess easements and maintenance agreements recipients on July thirteenth. No, it's gonna be mailed on July thirteenth.
With the deadline of August thirteenth, yeah.
The deadline of August thirteenth. Response deadline of August thirteenth. Second.
Comments? Good suggestions, no? Yo, I don't think you need to send it to council again, or unless you wanna, FYI, send it to us.
I'll wrap it up tomorrow morning, though. Make the changes we talked about and get it to Linda, and she'll start the mail merge process and
Do you have any comments? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose, say no. That's approved. It's a good step. Okay, I think that's, um, everything on our agenda. So, um.
Did we approve the schedule for the open house? I didn't include that in there.
You can, we'll put that into the letter, but yeah, we can.
I don't know that you need to. I think it's clearly consent, everybody's kind of on the same page as the point.
We actually already made that decision a while ago, didn't we, those dates?
No, I don't know that you guys have seen them. They're on the agenda. Good.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. During six fourteen.
Appreciate everybody's time tonight coming in for a special meeting. These items are kind of time sensitive and.